Section nine A dot thirty six dot zero two zero entitled quote making or possessing motor vehicle theft tools unquote. Welcome Attorney Fennel.
Thank you. So this is a proposal to adopt into our municipal code and RCW that is already in our state code. So as we've said before, we aren't allowed, we aren't able to prosecute under state law. We have to prosecute under municipal code. This is a, an offense that is not currently in the code and it's exactly what it sounds like. It is a prohibition on making or possessing motor vehicle theft tools. The ordinance itself just has a reference to that RCW. So so that you understand sort of what it is. It states that any person who makes or mends or causes to be made or mended, uses or has in their possession, any motor motor vehicle theft tool that is adapted, designed, or commonly used for the commission of motor vehicle theft or under circumstances evincing an intent to use or employ. And it keeps going and going. Is guilty of having, of making or having motor vehicle thefts. That that's RCW nine A five six oh six three. And this is a gross misdemeanor and adopting this ordinance would allow our city prosecutors to charge this offense.
Excellent. Thank you. And did this go through public safety?
Fair enough. Did go through public safety with. It's an update to the RCW.
Excellent. All right. Any comments or questions from anyone else in council? Younger? Perfect. Nope. I have no questions myself. Seems like a routine update. Great to get our code so we can make use of it. All right. Unless there's any objection, this will go on consent agenda for next meeting. All right. Thank you. Next up, we have our big item of the evening. We have item A five ordinance to amend BMC chapter nine dot three two entitled quote unauthorized camping unquote. Talking with Attorney Fennel, I'm gonna give a quick overview of this item, kind of where we've come from and where we're at today and kind of our our goals for this evening. Um, so a quick recap for everybody. The current ordinance, Bremerton Municipal Code nine dot thirty two titled unauthorized camping has been on the books since two thousand and four, and it basically says that no camping is allowed in the city at any time and any place. The Ninth Circuit Court has ruled recently that such ordinances cannot be enforced when there's not enough shelter space. And so we also need to update our ordinance to be in compliance with these Ninth Circuit Court rulings. The city council made it a priority at the start of this year to craft a new ordinance or at least update this one. And we've been working on it since June. In our initial meetings after hearing from the public, there was a majority of council in support of carving out some areas that would be able to be enforced at all times, regardless of shelter space availability. And also to be in compliant with the courts, some spaces that would not be enforced when shelter space was not available. When shelter space was available, uh, the ordinance could be enforced citywide. A reminder that at the moment, because there is not any available shelter space, the city is unable to enforce it at the moment. So um, all the public areas, uh, most of the public areas that we've been talking about, including in some of the maps from last week, the green areas, um, including planter strips and city right away, uh, somebody could be camping right there, right now at this moment, and there's no enforcement mechanism right at this moment. So after several meetings, based on the public feedback, um, council arrived at a draft. Uh, that's what's in our packet and was in the packet last week. And the draft has, I'd say, two main components. And again, when I'm finished here, I'll defer to Attorney Fennel to correct if I got anything misstated. But the two main components of the draft is at first defines available shelter space as public or private shelter, transitional housing or a permitted outdoor encampment located in either the city or in Kitsap County if free transportation is available. The other main component is that it would prohibit camping at all times in streets, sidewalks, and the places in between and public buildings like parking garages, police and fire stations, the senior center, et cetera, and city parks at night and in other city on locations normally off limits to the public with no trespassing signs like culverts in the watershed. And so simply taking the list of all public and city owned property and subtracting out those items I just mentioned, what that leaves us with is the map of properties that was distributed a week ago um, that we in the public got for the first time to look at at our meeting on September sixth, and we've now had about a week to review. Uh, kind of a reminder to everybody, uh, this ordinance is just regarding the enforcement clause. It defines the conditions under which camping can be enforced and where. Um, but I want to make clear that it doesn't establish any regulated encampment. It doesn't allocate funding. It doesn't create partnerships with the county or states or other nonprofits. Um, that is all out of the scope of of this agenda item and updating this ordinance. Um, I want to recognize there's been a lot of great ideas generated in discussion between the council, from the public um, on all sorts of ways that the city could create shelter space, provide resources, work with organizations. And those are all great suggestions. Um, but again, that all funded, that all falls under the mayor's purview to accomplish. Um, our scope of work right here is just to focus on when, where, and under what conditions camping can be enforced and the penalty for violations. So tonight, uh, the council, we have a few decisions to make. And I've kind of come up with the ones I can think of. Uh, one option is we move forward with exactly the draft ordinance that's in our packet for next week. Another option is that we can, uh, now that we've had some time to get public feedback and look at the list of these properties, we could stare at the list um, and basically remove some that we have concerns about. We couldn't remove all of them because we need some sort of minimum acreage to satisfy the Ninth Circuit Court, but we could start picking and removing properties that we know are not, uh, places that we want on there. We could also revisit some previous options. One of those options we discussed was a simple phrasing that the ordinance is only enforced when there's shelter space available and there's no sort of carve outs for for times or places. Um, we could go back to revisiting time based restrictions of certain areas. Okay. During the day, certain areas. Okay. At night. Uh, five hundred thousand feet from schools, community centers. We discussed all those. And there's one new option. Um, in a minute, I'll turn it over to Attorney Fennel. Um, looking at Eugene, uh, the city of Eugene had an interesting ordinance regarding planting strips that she'll mention. So we kind of wanted to decide how to move forward with that. At the same time, we also have two proposals from the mayor. Um, so the first proposal from the mayor came in right before our September sixth meeting. And it was a request to change the enforcement clause that's been in the ordinance since two thousand and four uh, to make penalty just be a straight misdemeanor instead of the um, monetary infractions, uh, which eventually would result in a misdemeanor. Um, the second suggestion by the mayor came in, I think it was just about two hours ago by email. Um, this was a uh, suggestion to change the language regarding available shelter space, updating that two thousand and four language. Um, using some other cities as examples, and one such clause I pulled out that was pretty common to all of them from the mayor's email was quote, if the person is unable to utilize and if the, sorry, if the person is unable to utilize an available overnight shelter due to voluntary actions such as intoxication, drug use, unruly or assault of behavior or violation of shelter rules, the overnight shelter space shall still be considered available for the purpose of this section. So again, the mayor's two suggestions and how we want to move forward on what we currently have available. So with that, I'll hand it over to Attorney Fennel to talk about the Eugene planning strip ordinance to put that on the table. And then I figure we can do a round of general thoughts and comments and then focus um, on specifically a path forward and the mayor's uh, suggestions. So Attorney Fennel, floor is yours.
Sure. Thank you. So the approach that was taken by Eugene is not something that would be done with the approach that the council has on the table right now in the packet. Um, it's just another option and it is a, an amendment to uh, the code involving sidewalks. One of the concerns that has been expressed is the situation on, is that better? One of the concerns has been the um, situation where um, a person is camping in a planter strip in front of someone's home and what can the council do about that situation? Um, the city of Eugene passed a code um, that amended their sidewalk code and um, we have a similar code. It's this, the code that I think some of you are familiar with where it makes the uh, property owner that abuts the sidewalk responsible for maintenance of the planting strip. And it says that if that person is responsible for that planting strip, they also have the ability to um, trespass people from that plant, planting strip. So with that responsibility comes a right to trespass. Um, our current code on um, sidewalk frontage, it's in chapter BMC, um, eleven point oh eight and um, that would be the code that would need to be amended to match up what Eugene is doing. Um, but like I said, that's a different direction than what the council's been doing. I think it would need more exploration. Eugene's Public Works Department brought that forward because it was seen as a um, regulation of the right of way. I think we certainly want to give the administration chance to to weigh in if the council went in that direction and wanted that proposal, but it's just something to consider. Um, but our sidewalk code, it actually does, um, it actually has increased, more increased penalties on a property owner than what our current camping code would have against anyone camping. It makes um, violation of our sidewalk code. If you don't maintain that plantings um, area, it, you're subject to a monetary penalty in in addition, or as an alternative, um, you'd be guilty of a misdemeanor. So that's um, the Eugene code and they, like I said, they um, they did it as an amendment to the sidewalk code, which then tied into the trespass.
Well, thank you for summing up that uh, that option. So council up in the floor. Anyone who wants to speak? Yeah. Brian, take it away.
Um, there are a few different buckets here that we're being asked to look at and is the police chief here or any representative from the? Oh, he's hiding in the back. He's hiding in the back. Um, Chief Wolf, um, I, I, I need you. We need you. Uh, we've had uh, discussions around enforcement and some of the changes that are being suggested, uh, I think have ties to that. And I, I just really, I need some, I, and I'm not speaking on behalf of anybody else here. Um, I need some reassurance that this uh, taking away the warnings before the misdemeanor uh, and then removing uh, the definition um, of available, available uh, shelter space, uh, that that description of a homeless person who uh, cannot get into a shelter for whatever reason, um, whether it's their behavior or not, but um, so I just, I, I had had questions about the enforcement of this ordinance from the very beginning. And we never really talked about that at our public safety committee meeting. It was, it was talked about in study session. And I at least relied on, on Kylie, City Attorney Fennel, um, uh, and I discovered recently that I had a different definition of enforcement, that it wasn't just whether something's constitutional, it's whether your department can enforce it. And and what kind of a priority can it make of it? Right? And this was at the same meeting that we discussed. Uh, uh, you know, the, the failure of the levy and the fact that our police and fire aren't getting more funding uh, in that area. Uh, so I'm asking you, chief, um, are these, are these uh, uh, recommendations that are coming through our mayor? Uh, are, are these copacetic with the BPD? Is, is this something you can work with? Am I getting the A okay? Um, did this, it, it seemed like it came from law enforcement, which I welcome. I welcome it. Uh, it's a little late, but I welcome it.
The microphone. There we go.
Oh, sorry. Okay. Dyslexic. Um, to answer your question, uh, it evolved out of a question I asked and it was uh, to, uh, it was to uh,
Just a little closer to the mic. Thank you.
It was tricky. It was uh, to ask what the expectations of the ordinance were. The ordinance that I finally got to see with the three citations and then on a fourth contact would be a misdemeanor. Um, if the expectation was, and I, and this was just coming out of a PAC meeting where quite a few people expressed that uh, they were not okay with MLK and they wanted that cleared. And I think the expectation was that the ordinance would clear MLK overnight. Um, so my question was, is that the council's expectation of this ordinance? Because the enforcement part of that, what it would look like is three citations before they're adjudicated. They'd have to be adjudicated is my understanding. And then on the fourth contact, that would be something you could arrest for misdemeanor. So what that would look like in real time is it could be two or three months before that happened. And then on the fourth one, then you take action um, to, that would not create the change I think people were looking for. So you know, that was my question is, is what's the, if the expectation is leave them in place, give them lots and lots of time and and go down there. The other, uh, the other question I had was, um, you know, the Washington State Legislature in the last three years have signaled that we don't want law enforcement doing lots of contacts on small things. So this would require us for, for contacts, for negative contacts with uh, a group of people. Some of them have behavioral health issues. Some of them have severe drug issues. And those contacts are not warm and fuzzy always. Uh, so uh, that's now putting a department that is uh, really stretched right now uh, to ask us to do that four times over time. You know, I don't know as though that's realistic. So if the expectation was that, you know, because and again, I think people uh, have in their mind, uh, when I hear certain people talk, I, it reminds me of the videos of the nineteen thirties when they'd go into the Hoover vills with clubs and beat the homeless people. That's not what we do. Uh, most of the time on just about every law that we enforce, we actually get compliance. And we spend a lot of time talking to people. We work hard to get compliance. There is a minority of people, ten percent or so, that just won't get with the program. So that's when you need to have, uh, you know, the carrot didn't work, so now you go to the stick and you need something meaningful. So when we have a solution for people, we have a place for them to go. And now it's time for them to go to then issue them a twenty five dollar ticket three times for three, that, that's not going to cause that. So you, you need, if, if the expectation is to move them and and get changed, affect change there, then you need some teeth in the law. So does that answer that portion of it?
It does, chief.
And then it's
It's understandable.
As to, um, I, I agree also with, I wasn't aware of, of the person causing trouble, but you know, if we're providing shelter and shelters available to people, again, we don't, law enforcement, we don't come across people that want shelter. We don't come across that they are cooperative and you know, like we'll find mom in the car that just found herself in a bad spot. And we'll say, hey, this isn't a safe place for you. We'll, we'll get her and her kids somewhere safe. We, we have navigators to help them find resource and stuff. The people that we deal with are people that are outside of, you know, they don't want to. You know, and a lot of them want to do certain things. They don't want to abide by any rules, any shelter rules, any, anything. And if we have shelter available and those people just want to be disruptive and cause problems, then we should still probably be able to move them along. Why are we, you know, what, what does that person's rights supersede the rights of the person to peace in their home on that street? So it's a balancing act there that we're trying to achieve.
You know, I, I recall days in the domestic violence arena when advocates were first starting to work with law enforcement. And it was a coming together of two very different perspectives, right? And yet over the years, it really worked and it really affected some positive change uh, within that issue. And what I want, what I've been encouraging myself to do and what I want to encourage us all to do um, is balance it all. You know, really try to balance the needs of our community in the, the different segments, the best that we can. Um, and as Chair of the Public Safety Committee, uh, I, in looking back, boy, I wish that we had been able to talk this all through more, you know, with you or with your representative. Because I remember talking about the definition and talking about the warnings and um, and yet as someone who has worked closely with law enforcement for many years, as an advocate, not a cop, I value your perspective tremendously on what the realities are. And the realities are that we're having things happen on our streets that are absolutely unacceptable. And it's impacting our families. It's impacting uh, uh, children. It's impacting the individuals themselves. We're trying to figure this out. We really are, and we're grappling with it and it's tough work. Um, I would like to make a suggestion. Um, I, I know other people have stuff to say about this. When, when we were talking about identifying the process tonight and identifying property, um, you use the word remove, President Coughlin, and I, I really don't want to have to have to go through everyone and I would rather, you know, I look, I think it was Anna who first recommended the Oyster Bay property. And that's the one that rises to the top within discussions I have with a lot of different people who know about this stuff, you know, so I, I just, I'm just questioning that because I like to streamline processes whenever I possibly can. Um, and the only other thing I have to say is let's get public relations in our workings a little bit better. I think that um, bringing the map in. Uh, I know why, I know why, I know the come from, but bringing the map in when we hadn't even, it was like passed out. Um, really inflamed this community. And there wasn't enough, there wasn't adequate preparation as far as I'm concerned of the community or even of the council for this. And I want our community's energy used in impactful ways, not wasteful ways, not getting a community sure that we're going to vote, you know, that this thing is going to go right in their cul-de-sac. Um, and we were sitting there going, what? No, we just got it. We're just talking about this. But when it comes into public record like that, um, of course, the Kitsap Sun is going to pick it up. And I think that's unfortunate. I believe in full transparency. I really, really do. But we need to frame the message, man, because we tweaked a lot of people. We triggered a lot of fear. Um, uh, and maybe that's a good thing, but uh, I just don't like to see wasted energy. I really don't. And I would much rather use that community energy for good. That's all I gotta say.
We'll go Chamberlain then Dennehy.
I got some things to say. Big surprise. I've got some things to ask first. Um, okay. So we can't talk about the language, um, really without discussing the properties. Um, they're in a mix. We can't really separate them in a very compartmentalized way. Um, so I mean, like theoretically, we approve the language recommended by the mayor. What's going to happen uh, fifteen days after September twentieth? Actually, let's, let's go back. September twentieth, theoretically, we pass an ordinance with language. Um, not even doing anything with the properties because that's a whole nother ballgame. It's a whole nother study session in my opinion, but let's say we don't do anything. The green stays green. What happens in the fifteen days after September twentieth vote? And then what happens at day sixteen? That's a probably a question for both of, both Attorney Fennel and uh, probably Chief Wolf might also have some insight as to the education piece that he discussed with me before.
Sure. So, um, and this goes to Councilmember Fry's question that, that you emailed and I was going to answer it when we got here about what happens with outreach to property owners for passage of an ordinance like this. And there's no um, requirement in, in the RCW or in our code that there be notice given to particular property owners. So it would go through the normal process of an update to our code, similar to the other ordinance that we just talked about, the burglary tools. It'd be, a summary would be published um, in the Kitsap Sun. And then um, after publication, it would become effective after ten days. And so there, there's no other requirements um, for additional outreach. And that doesn't mean that the administration might not take additional outreach. Um, and that was like what you said, that would be uh, Chief Wolf's, uh, as far as like what type of outreach would be done before.
And that's, and my understanding in talking with you about an ordinance, right? It takes ten to fifteen days, depending on business days.
Sure. So um, it's usually the following Monday that um, our ordinances are actually published in the sun. So if you passed it on Wednesday, it, it sometimes can be published on a Friday, but it's usually the following Monday. And then it's ten days after that.
Would the Kitsap Sun get it right? Oh, whoops. Um, so my next question would be for Chief Wolf. Can you tell us about what the education looks like? And then what happens at day sixteen? Um, day, whatever it is that it officially becomes an ordinance, where do those people go? So education and then where do people go if we pass this on the twentieth?
As far, as far as the lead up to it, um, we would, uh, I would definitely be spending a lot of time educating people. Um, we'd be working with them. We're, we do as much as we can now with the resources we have. Uh, but I think we would saturate that area several times. Uh, we would pull together teams of navigators and uh, and I'm, I'm just used to yelling. So um, we, 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 we'd use our navigator, we'd, we'd ask the real team to help and we'd, we'd be educating people. Um, I think for the most part, we'll get compliance from, I'm hoping most people, uh, I think we have a subset that we haven't seen down here before that have come to us from wherever they've come from. Uh, some of them uh, enjoy the safety of Bremerton uh, as opposed to where they used, where they came from. Um, so
Can I ask just briefly, what does compliance mean? Where do they go if you get compliance for moving off of MLK or Broadway, for instance, which I know is, is the goal? Um, we know it's, those are the target areas. When you say compliance, where do those people go?
They can go anywhere they want.
Okay. They can go anywhere they want. Green, red, um, like if we have a map and we publish all these properties, are you gonna tell them to go to, are you gonna have a map ready and tell them to go to one of these properties?
If there's a map published that says this is where you can camp legally, then yeah, we would pass that out.
I can jump in also, uh, Councilor and Chief, um, and I'll be joining the chief uh, with the outreach, initial outreach, education, real team, um, you know, case managers. There's, there's more than just handing them a map and then the real team telling them where to go versus an officer. There's, there's the, the deep case um, management. There's the, you know, it's really almost diving in and trying to learn about individuals. Get a little bit of background. You know, how did they end up on our street? And is there, you know, and this is just one example. Is there a, a, a way to build a bridge back to um, and and maybe repair what happened at certain point? It could have been a family member, a roommate. Who knows what might have happened? That, and this is beyond our, this is why we bring in experts in this field to do that type of work. And so there'll be a housing specialist down there. There's some folks who may qualify. If there's a veteran, we'll get him a, I could probably get him a home in two days. So just, just learning about who would, who's out there, you know, that's going to be the case managers, real team, navigators.
And that's the hope is that you can find homes um, or find a place to put folks, but there's not going to be um, places you can put all those folks. We know that realistically. That's just the, that's just reality. Um, some folks are gonna scatter, right? They're gonna scatter away. They're gonna go to potentially the green areas. Um, whatever we publish, whatever we decide. To me, it just feels a little premature for us to even begin talking about properties. Um, but let's say, for instance, we have a vote on an ordinance on October eleventh instead of September twentieth. Ten to fifteen days later, what happens? The shelters open up November first. Um, and it gives us time to have an in-depth discussion and receive more public comment from our constituents. And let me tell you, how many of y'all are in my district? I, I got, yeah, there's a few of y'all. I got to meet a bunch of people.
You're not gonna ask comments to me not talking.
Sorry. Oh, by the way, I'm not going to mention there's still cookies in the back for people too. Um, so I got to meet a bunch of my constituents, um, and they have some very strong opinions. Um, and there were some divergent opinions too, that I heard about later that, that were afraid to speak up at a public meeting and some that were very brave and divergent thinking that were able to speak up, but um, I, I want more feedback. I want more feedback from more than just my, my constituents. I want to hear what all y'all's constituents have to say about the green zones. And that's going to take longer than a week. And that's going to take longer than a week as far as I'm concerned. Thank you. That's all I have for now.
Dennehy. Yeah, there is.
Just to clarify. You know, what we are seeking is, is what are your expectations? You know, as the council, you represent the city, you represent your constituents, you hear from them. My expectation is that communicate to us what your expectations are on how we go forward with this. If, if your, if your expectation is for the police department to solve this problem, to have the answers of where to put people. I do not have those answers. I, I, I won't have those answers. Our hands are pretty full dealing with crime issues in the city of Bremerton. If the police department is the solution to a homeless problem, then you do not have a solution. So I, and I, I don't hear anyone in the administration or the council saying that that's the solution to this. And so I don't want anyone to hear that. I think people feel that that's what everybody wants to do. That is not what we want to do. And we can operate, the police department operates within the law. And those are the tools we have to work with. We don't have the resources. We don't have lots of behavioral health people out here helping us. We don't have beds for drug addicted people, you know? So the tool we end up using is an arrest. And we hope the judges then can find them a place that, to, to stop those negative patterns. So it, it's going to take all of us to fix this.
Give you the chance if you wanted to respond at the floor.
Thank you. And I do appreciate that you don't, just that you're saying you don't want to be the solution alone, right? And, and, and I think that we need to honor that. I think what's unclear to me is actually the continuums of care that are going to be used to re-home, relocate folks. I, that's unclear to me. Because these folks are still somebody, somebody, and they deserve dignity. They deserve a chance. And some folks are gonna take, they're gonna take that chance. They're gonna make a better life for themselves if we have the resources for them. And some are gonna choose not to. We know this. That's just statistics. So I guess I, my, I'm just, it just feels like the whole thing, and I've said this before, it feels like an unfunded mandate that we have an ordinance that is an unfunded mandate for the police department to try to scramble together and use whatever resources they can come up with to make it work. And we haven't allocated a budget with this. We haven't like learned what the continuum of care is going to be. Just, I've just heard about the real team. I would like to know, I mean, I know each case is individual and in specific, but I would like to know how these folks are going to be rehomed.
And I'm gonna, it's really tough to disentangle the provision of resources versus our specific agenda item to update this ordinance regarding enforcement. But I want to try and, try and stick us on that, on that path. But with that, I was gonna hold off Mayor. That's okay. Let's go at Dennehy then, then Makler.
Mayor, I'll see you sometime to you in a minute. So I wanna, I wanna frame this really appropriately in a way that humanizes the people that we're talking about. This is not an individual failing. This is a societal failing. I just got back from Japan with my husband. We spent a couple of weeks, Tokyo, Kyoto, Osaka. Tokyo is the largest city in the world, 40 million people. Nobody chains up their bikes there. We did not see one homeless person. That's because that country invested in education. It's invested in healthcare. It's invested in its people. So when we talk about this, these are our neighbors, these are our community members, these are people. They are sons, daughters, nephews, nieces, parents, a lot of parents. Trying to make it in a country that has left them behind due to corporate greed, due to de-investment in social structures and due to 62 billionaires that own the same amount of wealth as 3.5 billion people in the world. So I want to just frame it from that perspective that we're talking about people. The next part I want to talk about is a framing of what is going on because I keep hearing council members fight the hypothetical. The Ninth Circuit, which controls laws in this district along with Montana, Idaho, California, Nevada, other states, Alaska, Hawaii, stated that the Eighth Amendment finds it cruel and unusual punishment to criminalize being poor in this country. Think back to Dickensian 1800s England with poor houses. That's what a lot of states do. I lived in Louisiana. If there was somebody that was poor out on the street, they would charge them with loitering. And they would charge them with loitering again, and they would charge them with basically being poor to the point where the prisons down there, the most populated prisons in the country are full of mostly black and brown people that have been disenfranchised economically. So we really need to think about this in a very large holistic way. That being said, the Ninth Circuit has said, if you don't have enough shelters beds for people, it is unconstitutional to remove them, to arrest them, to give them a misdemeanor. You can no longer do that. That's why we have to rewrite this ordinance. We can no longer enforce that. If we enforce that, the city faces liability. An attorney like myself will jump on that in a second, sue the city, and it'll be taxpayer money that goes to that attorney and to those other aspects of it. So we have to fix this. That's the bottom line. We, as council, were lobbied by people on MLK where homeless people have been congregating because that's where the shelter was. That's where Salvation Army was before it closed. That's where Peninsula Community Health is. That's where a lot of resources are. They've created an encampment there because they have nowhere else to go. That obviously creates problems for people with private property rights, people living there. There's a lot of concerns about devaluation of property, about people defecating and urinating, about some things that people bring into the encampments because they have no hope. So much drug use is tied to having absolutely zero hope in this country of being able to have a better day in the next day. Both of these interests are valid. Making sure that we're taking care of our citizens in a way that allows them a modicum of dignity and a shelter over their head versus making sure communities are orderly and crime is reduced and a lot of things that go on with homeless encampments aren't taking place. And so now, you know, Chief Wolf is correct. This is a decision of the political body. Council in conjunction with the mayor to determine the best way to do this. And I am so glad that we've received, I think, on my almost two and a half years on council, the most public comments on any issue that I've seen and the most people attending. Due to the Open Public Meetings Act, it's working. You receive the documents when we receive the documents so that this is transparent. We, we as a council shouldn't be getting documents that the public is not seeing right away. So this is working. The public engagement is working and we see you and we hear you. And we are going to do our absolute best to make the right decision on this. And, and I encourage you to continue to write to us. I encourage you to, to meet with us. I encourage you to really think through this issue.
Councilmember Dennehy, sorry to.
Sorry. Okay.
Yeah, direct comments to me. Thank you.
I'm sorry, Council President. My first question is actually going to be directed towards Chief Wolf. The misdemeanor adjudication. So is it my understanding, because there's a lot of laypeople in here, we would need to have a conviction, like a strict liability traffic ticket three times in a row, then to have a misdemeanor charge the way that we're currently writing it. We would have to wait for the court to adjudicate. Is that correct? Okay, thank you. I think everybody's here to talk about where, because these are options. We can have no ordinance. And those without shelter can go anywhere that there is public property, as long as shelter beds don't exist and we can enforce. Otherwise, it's unconstitutional. Or as a city council who decides how to manage public property, we can choose the best way to provide services to these folks and to determine where we are containing encampments, basically. The main thing, I'm just going to get right to the punch. The main thing that I'm concerned about is the ability for folks to have services, the ability for people to live with dignity and the ability for continuity if shelter beds come available. Pendleton Place, the hotel right now that is being used as a, a shelter, I'm blinking on the name. Quality Inn. Grocery stores such as Winco, restaurants, fast food restaurants where low skilled employees might be able to apply and get jobs and walk to their jobs if they are unable to provide themselves transportation. The ability to get a bus if they need to go to Seattle, if they need to go to a healthcare provider. I think this all points to the Oyster Bay parcel. I want to hear community input about it. I think in an earlier study session, I thought, I made this statement that it's imperative that we delay enforcement so that there is an education campaign. So that, you know, we wait until we enforce this, until the Salvation Army opens up again. So we are displacing as few people as possible. I, I think those are my two main pitches to city council and to the community at large, and I would like to hear feedback on that. With that, I'm gonna cede to the mayor because I know that he has something to say, and then I have one final question.
See, I'm gonna back up a little bit. There was a question, and I, I think I can present a model for what we can do for folks as an example of public, some type of outreach. The, what we use, we had something called Kitseps Connect. So this is something you, council, invest in, and I ask for you to do this every year. And you provide funds. And so we support that program. It closed, but I was able to restart it with support from Peninsula Community Health Services. It's called the Stand By Me Program. There are multiple diverse services in this team, with this team. That's the model that we can use. We can expand it to, to go out into the community and do this initial outreach. Provide options for folks. So, you know, I, I don't, you know, and I, I think, and I respect some of the diverse opinions here. But we can provide options. We can, we can show a path forward. And this is what this team does. You invest in it every year. I'm asking for it again. And so let's just research that model.
My, thank you, Mayor. My, my final question is to City Attorney Fennel. I, I very much value your advice on a myriad points. The enforcement mechanism is the one that I'm wavering on when I cast my vote. I, I do think it's, it's cruel to, to criminalize being poor. However, I, I understand the practicalities that Chief Wolf is, is bringing in and the mayor's suggestion of going straight to a misdemeanor. Knowing litigation and legal processes, can you give me a, a timeframe of how long it would take to actually enforce the moving of somebody from property that we deem no longer available for camping? And the actual likelihood of being able to track that individual down after three citations and three adjudications and then actual enforcement?
Sure. So infractions are going to be processed under court rules that are specific for infractions. And so those are the ones that most people are actually familiar with. It's the same type of rules that you would see if you get a traffic ticket. You, you have an opportunity, once it's filed with the court, you can contest the infraction, you can go before a judge, you could ask for a continuance. You could have an entire hearing on whether or not you violated this particular ordinance. If the judge found it committed, that would go on your record as a finding of committed. And so even within that one process, you're looking at at least a month typically. And if, if not more, given on the circumstances, like, for example, the person asked for more time. The code, as it's set out right now, like I said, it does require three of those findings of committed before the fourth contact is a misdemeanor. And then, of course, that is the point at which the person would be facing an arrest for violating the offense. So when the, the chief says it could take several months, it certainly have no reason to say otherwise. That's about right, at least.
Follow up to that. Again, my area of expertise is civil rights, not criminal law. If an officer doesn't show up to testify to say, yes, I, I did see this person. I'm going to identify that person. This person was in the zone. In order to be adjudicated, what's the likelihood of a judge being able to say?
They can rely on the affidavit of the officer for those. But it's, it's not like, I think some people, you might be thinking of the trick of requesting the speed measuring device expert. That used to be the way that some people would get out of traffic tickets. That wouldn't be the case here. So the, the court could rely on sworn testimony for that purpose. But another consideration is that it does make the, the criminal prosecution, once you finally get to that point, having predicate offenses does open up each of those to potential attack by a public defender if there was some sort of irregularity in how those were obtained. Or if the person, perhaps if they did something to get a deferred finding, then they fell off the record, then they wouldn't be able to be used as predicates. So it does make it more complicated for the prosecution. However, that said, they're both enforceable. I mean, they're, they're, from the standpoint of being constitutional, it was actually grants passed had a similar enforcement scheme that the court looked at. There was nothing particularly wrong with that. It's constitutional either way.
Okay. So, so this is one of my considerations, counsel, is especially because the voters recently rejected a levy to increase police officers and EMTs is that the burden of not only just testifying in, in these things and, and facing the attacks of defense attorney, but writing solid affidavits, writing solid statements, that's something that takes time. And as we've heard from Police Chief Wolf over and over and over, it makes sense, the police, you know, 10 officers down from what we really need is going to triage and prioritize violent crime, other things like that, as they should. So my mind is being swayed and then I'm tending to agree with the mayor's proposal. Thank you.
Next up, Makler.
Thank you, President Coughlin. Chief, it's really a pleasure to see you. We have missed you at every single one of these discussions we've been having since June. Quinn, welcome back. I hope you had a great vacation over the past few weeks. On August 23rd, all of us on council were really psyched because we had August 30th off. But something we made sure to do before we left was to pull together various things, sorry, that we had been talking about since June. One thing, Counselor Fry originated this, which was to imitate the Lakewood ordinance and set aside 1% of the general fund to fund the installation, maintenance of a place for people to go. Where yeah, just the vision that I think we were slowly working towards was that we would have an urban rest stop. It would have toilets, showers, laundry, storage for personal possessions, which I know Counselor Younger was very concerned about, and quite rightly so. I said, wouldn't it be great if we could use our security guards that are patrolling parking garages to sort of supervise this site as well as having KCR, KMH? I'm almost, yeah, I'm, I'm coming to a conclusion really quick. And other organizations, Counselor Vice President Chamberlain said, well, they're not trained in conflict resolution, sympathetic mobilization and de-escalation, but it turns out they are. So we have all of the elements. So we have all of the elements and with the work that the Audit Committee had been doing since February, we had a parcel list. Our understanding on August 23rd was that that parcel list would come to us not in a secret way, but for us to say, okay, which of these parcels is going to work for this purpose? Vice President Chamberlain very intelligently informed us that we would have to, might well have to have more than one since people might have restraining orders. These are all the things that we were expecting to be doing on September 6th.
Muckler, I'm gonna
Almost done.
Actually, I'm gonna rule that's out of order because you're speaking for the council and that's not correct.
Fair enough. Okay. That was my understanding. Is that fair enough?
Fair enough.
At this point, um, council can allocate funds and council can pass ordinances. I am also based on Chief Wolf's testimony in favor of the mayor's amendment. Um, I would like to include the 1% for the general fund. I think that since we have 1.75 staffers and the mayor has 438 that we should complete this ordinance and give it to the mayor to execute. That's my.
I feel I need to jump in and remind we cannot allocate money as a, as a, as part of this ordinance. So that, that is not the scope of this ordinance. All right. Does anyone else want the? Sure.
So the Lakewood ordinance on which this is based allocated 1% of the general.
Right, Fennell, can you clarify?
So Lakewood had already done that in their budget, and so they were, they were doing aware as as to what they had already done.
And point of clarification, uh, again, um, it's not that we can't, it's that we as a council have decided to wait till the budget process. Is that correct?
I think that under the rules regarding one subject matter, I think that a budget allocation to at this specific purpose would need to be handled through the budget process. And then you could reference it as something that you're doing, but I don't think that the, just throwing it in there on the where as section is going to do that.
Thank you. I mean, I, I was thinking in the ordinance itself, but the, the one subject rule, that's, that's, okay. Thanks so much.
All right. Well, let's go to Councilmember Younger.
Thank you. So I want to focus on the ordinance on hand and fixing what we have based on the public testimony and all the letters that have been written. And also the mayor's amendments he has too that he's proposed. And so let's discuss both. Uh, the first one, uh, after hearing from Chief Wolf, I I tend to agree with them. We can't pass an ordinance when the administration, especially the chief of police is indicating, uh, it's not likely to be effective. And our intent is to give immediate relief. I, um, my intent with passage of whatever ordinance is to give immediate relief to those people that are been experiencing the homeless at their front step, uh, currently, i.e. MLK Way and Broad, Broadway. Nevertheless, we have all these letters saying that we'll find, but don't do the harm by just moving them to these 20 or so locations. Although clearly that's not the intent. The intent, as Councilmember Muckler said, was that we'd have a designated camping site. So the first thing is, uh, and I tend to agree with the chief based on the drug law that wasn't enforced, that was thrown out by the courts a couple of years ago on the possession and required the police to do the onerous task of uh, notifying the, uh, person with possession of drugs three times before they could actually do something. And this is very similar to what the current Bose ordinance is right now. So I, I, I'm I'm going with the chief and the mayor on that one. Uh, that makes sense. And I have no intention of passing ordinance that I've been told is gonna not be effective from the onset. The second one, uh, where the mayor wants to adopt similar language that all the other municipalities and I believe the county has uh, mending the definition of available, uh, space, uh, to the effect, saying that if someone is disruptive and has been trespassed, if you will, or under the influence and, uh, would disrupt the others at the, uh, shelter area is considered to, to have that shelter available, but through their own actions. It's not. What apparently the attorneys, Attorney Fennell, believe that that's constitutional. In other words, because let's say that there are they're so belligerent that they won't be accepted at a shelter. Um, and, and in fact, have nowhere to go, at least in this county, if the county and the other cities enforce their, their rules already on the books. Is that constitutional? They have nowhere to go.
Yeah. So the, the, the key word in the provision that the other cities have adopted is, is voluntary conduct. And so if since voluntary conduct has, um, resulted in them being, um, trespassed from the available shelter, then the city having, you know, uh, provided that shelter, um, is sufficient for enforcement. So that's, that's how, um, they address that.
So is being on, uh, if the behavior is enticed or brought on by being on, uh, controlled substances, is that voluntary conduct?
Well, like it, it, for the purposes, yes. I mean, for the purposes of, let's say, like, uh, driving under the influence.
Yeah.
Um, a defense that the person is, um, alcoholic.
Okay. All right. So I'm not as, uh, strongly in favor as for that as I am for the first one. Definitely making a misdemeanor. I assume the police is going to say, hey, you need to move to an area where camping is authorized. Um, give them that vermelde warning before um, they're arrested. I, I believe the police will do that. Um, the second one I gotta think about, and I'd like to hear some more comment from my fellow council members before I weigh in on that and also from the public. Cause that, that's an interesting one. I'm not for or against that one. I need to think that one over a little more. We just got that proposal a couple hours ago. The other thing is, uh, we mentioned, uh, Council President Coughlin mentioned, well, maybe we could pare down the properties or that is an option. And I don't at this point want to pick winners or losers. I don't want to look at the list of properties and take certain ones off the list. That's gonna invite complete chaos tonight if we did that. I think overall I'm seeing heads nod. So I'm more of the opinion that we need to go with what we originally intended to do, which was have to designated camping space. The whole reason to have the other properties was to have a relief valve that would never be used. In my opinion, uh, because you have to have something on the books and we wanted to afford the utmost protection for uh, the, the, um, property owners, uh, adjacent to, uh, the right of way and to parks. And to city owned buildings, but in retrospect, that's picking winners or losers too. So how about this? Uh, I want to pass an ordinance, whether we want to delay it for the uh, until the Salvation Army has their shelter, uh, opening in November, that might be a good idea. We could pass an ordinance. Uh, we can either wait on it and get more input, or we could pass it and we can move the effective dates, the ordinance to an appropriate date so that can happen. But I would propose to, uh, make it a misdemeanor. So add that language in. And, uh, keep the language about a designated camping site in there on the definition of shelter. So we don't have to change that. And I want the administration to pick an area that can be used as a camping space. And also let's think outside the box. It doesn't have to be, because there's been lots of complaints that, hey, look, these properties, most of them aren't suitable. I agree. Whether it's topography or size. But if the administration looks at the list and says, none of the currently city owned property is suitable. And by the way, I would like it to be improved. Definitely. I definitely would like it to have, uh, porta potties and um, some type of running water if possible. But if for whatever reason that can't be done as far as any improvements, designate a camping space. And if you don't, well, then all public property is open to, to camping. So this is all squarely on the administration to designate some space or the political turmoil will be incredible. So the, the other thing is I mentioned, think outside the box. If we don't have suitable property within the city's own inventory, nothing prevents us from renting a flat lot someplace that is best suited to have minimal impact on the community. And it does not necessarily have to be according to our definitions within the city limits, just within the Kitsap County. And if it's outside the city limits, I believe under the definition, there needs to be transportation to that camping spot. So keep the ordinance as is, strike the, um, the protective language for parks right away. Um, so basically the ordinance is enforceable if there is no designated, uh, unsheltered space and make sure we have that language in there that we already have for a designated camping spot. The mayor's got to find a suitable location based on the current city properties and or rent, uh, a more suitable spot.
Good now.
Thank you, Coughlin. So, um, so I, I feel like this is the how do you eat an elephant thing? Because I feel like we're trying to tackle all these issues at the same time. And, uh, if we, um, and I do, uh, agree with a lot of what, uh, Councilmember Younger just said. Is the, the idea of some designated space, but what happens if those designated spaces hit capacity? Again, it's gonna, it's gonna, it's gonna need to flow out. And, um, although I sympathize with most of the folks that have, uh, we've heard from all these, uh, green and red areas have been considered public property. So we're looking for ways to give some structure somewhere. All right. I got a whole bunch of, uh, crazy notes here. So I guess one thing is we talked about some different ways to regulate this from the very beginning and we kind of settled on, um, uh, areas, I guess. But do we want to revisit anything else now that we know? Well, um, it was, it was a theoretical question. Um, but thanks for your answer. Meaning that we, you know, we didn't ask for a map of where camping could be. We asked for the data and it was presented as a map and reported as a map. And, um, so to me, that's just a piece of data. We look at that map, there's a couple of good places. There's some really ridiculous places. There's some places that just don't seem to fit the community where they'd be put. You know, do we want to look at, look at some sort of time restrictions also? Uh, this came from, I've had a lot of conversations lately, uh, with this, um, but kind of thinking that, uh, you know, ideally homelessness, uh, is a temporary state and we are working to get folks moved on. So maybe some sort of time restriction would be, uh, a, a, a different thing. Again, maybe we're thinking also worst case here, right? Maybe we fill up, uh, you know, the, uh, oyster, a couple of Oyster Bay lots and then we start renting another lot. You know, until we is, there has to be, uh, I think Councilmember Younger referred to it sort of as a, we have to build in a relief valve in the system. Um, and ideally we, we stop the problem, but I think that's not going to happen anytime real soon. I think we, uh, echoing a couple of things, I think we need to find something that's effective. So it has to be, it has to be, you know, effective for everybody, for the folks that live uh, in it, near it, the folks that are visiting it, the folks that are providing services to it. Um, but I also think there's a bit where we have to share responsibility. So if we're going to ask citizens to maybe put up with, um, having something, you know, in their backyards, so to speak. I think it's okay also to ask the folks that were housing to take on some responsibility, whether that's moving to a certain location or having some time restraints or things like that. I think, I think it's about looking at the two ends. Right? Where we, we've heard, in fact, early on, we heard mostly from folks that were really advocates for unhoused folks. And now we're hearing folks that are concerned about their, their communities and where they live and the way they live. You know, so, but we have to kind of, we have to move. We have to, we have to move on both sides. We can't expect everybody to move to one end or to the other. We have to find something and share that responsibility. Uh, I like the idea of possibly, uh, renting lots if we have to. Um, I kind of want to, what it, can somebody answer the question on can the, like, keep hearing that South Kitsap has these sort of tiny homes, and that's probably an overstatement for what they are, but these, these temporary shelters. Do we know why they haven't done it? And do we know if that could happen here? I'll drive down with a pickup truck and pick some up.
Yeah.
So can anybody, yeah, thank you.
Yeah, they, they actually disbanded after about seven years, that effort, they could not find a location. Um, and so they've been, uh, uh, donating those, those shelters. So they're, they're gone. I'm researching next week, um, another type of, uh, tiny home shelter. It's a kit. They're called pallets, pallet communities. Go ahead and research them. And I'll, I'll find a spot, a location for those, uh, in the city. So that'll, that'll be coming. We'll try to, I'll take into consideration a whole bunch of things. Those have the, um, potential of serving as a, uh, meeting that shelter requirement that we're required to have. Um, so yeah, just, um, you know, and the other things about locations, you know, we don't, I, you focused on one. Oyster Bay. There's more than that. So just let us do our due diligence. Let us do our research. Got the partners in place. We're meeting this week. There's multiple, multiple things we're moving forward at the same time. And, and so, um, but as we move forward, we'll still obviously um, have to have an order. So, um, yeah, we'll be communicating on this.
Oh, can somebody tell me what the pallet housing is? I know I've heard a mention of it, but I don't actually know what it is. I could assume.
If you want to.
Yeah, I know Anna's mentioned it, so she's.
The president is giving me a little treat because he's actually toured them. Um, they are flat pack metal houses, um, really cabins. Um, they are insulated. Uh, they have heat, they have AC, they have smoke detectors. You can have a pet in them. Um, they don't have plumbing. And they go up in about a half an hour.
Right.
Um, and then they will have like two or three that would go together to form the urban rest stop. That's it.
Thank you. That's way better than the name would, uh, make me think. I almost thought of a tent stapled to a pallet. So um, all right, I think, I think, um, the, the last thing I want to kind of keep bringing up, I feel like it's the third time I've asked this question. But the right of way, if somebody has a right of way with a sidewalk on it in front of their house, usually they own the property underneath there and have given the city an easement or a right of way probably for sidewalks and utilities and transportation. But not for other people to come and stay there. Would that, is that? Can you correct anything I said that's untrue?
I, I think the issue is that it's that usually is what you're talking about. And this is what, um, Eugene ran into. Um, when they enacted their particular ordinance with regard to, to trespass in that area. And that's because, um, the exact nature of a right of way dedication is unknown usually to the property owner. And it can really only be determined by researching that. And it can really only be determined by researching that right away's history, which means we go back to the original um class. And so it's not uh I guess a determination that can be made by the law enforcement person who's getting the call that a tent is set up on the planting strips in front of a particular house. It requires, you know, pulling flat maps sometimes from the eighteen hundreds.
So Council President Coughlin, could I clarify one thing, a comment I made? I want to make sure I, everybody, I was clear.
Councilmember Goodell agrees.
Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you, Councilmen are good now. So um, just just so you know, uh re- um regardless of the camping ordinance, when it's enacted, in what time, place, and manner you agree upon, I will be working on these these um housing option, housing and shelter options. So that that will continue. It's been going on, that will continue. Um, so just, I I wanted to be clear on that. Uh, your, whether you get an ordinance passed or not, doesn't affect that effort. The only thing the ordinance does is it it identifies a a part part of it as shelter capacity is mentioned in there, which would I'll I'll be also trying to meet that requirement. So.
Perfect. Thank you for echoing my comments made at the beginning. Appreciate it.
So then just one, one last thing is, as I I feel like we're moving in a direction here and um so I I like this idea and I think that this could completely go onto administrations, what I'm about to ask for, but like clearly there's gonna be a need for portable toilets. And so are are you, do you have folks that are working on like how many, like a tent to portable toilet ratio if we can bring in this? And like, where do we draw the line between providing sort of temporary services or having things constructed? You know, I'd like the idea of a fence for security for the folks in there, but I don't want it to look like a zoo, right?
Reading a little bit too in my previous ask of not to, again, really hard to separate the resource provision with this ordinance that we're trying to focus on tonight.
Well, it seems like the ordinance is being hung up on the nuts and bolts of the solution because previously I've said that 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 the standing up shelter designated areas have no business in this. But if that's what's gonna hold us up, that's why I was bringing up. Thank you. I have nothing else.
I did just want to point you toward, there is a section of code that the council's already passed um that addresses what's required in a temporary encampment in the city and it addresses all of those things entitled twenty. So um, that was passed in twenty nineteen. And so it just gives you an idea of the kind of things that are um addressed and it's fencing and security and uh water and toilets and um the amount of space that's required and that kind of thing.
All right, take my turn real quick here. And then after that, I'm gonna see if we have can kind of a consensus path forward and see how it goes there. Um, yeah, really glad to see all the engagement. And I just want to say to my council members, I'm really proud of all of your leadership and commitment to tackling this issue as we committed to at the beginning of the year. We haven't shied away from it. It's a tricky issue. It's a hot button topic. It's got a lot of strong feelings. It's nationwide. Um, but again, counsel, I'm really, I'm really proud of you. Um. All right. So as far as the enforcement goes and the mayor's suggesting a misdemeanor, I've gotta echo, I wish we had this when we started talking back in June. I wish we had this at the start of the year and we made this a priority, but better late than never um to have the suggestion with expertise in administration. Um, in Public Safety Committee, I asked about similar laws and their enforcement mechanisms. And Attorney Fennel, my understanding is that um you know, trespass trespassing on private property and some other similar laws are also just straight misdemeanors. Is that correct? And can you give some examples of those similar laws?
Well, sure. I mean, the the usually anything that, I mean, anything that's criminal in our code is going to be a misdemeanor, which is punishable up to ninety days or a gross misdemeanor, which is punishable up to three hundred and sixty four days. Um, the the ordinance that we just considered regarding um theft tools, that's a gross misdemeanor. That's three hundred and sixty four days. Um, other misdemeanors of stealing a shopping cart is a misdemeanor. Um. The code that we just talked about about the sidewalk maintenance, actually not maintaining that planning strip is actually a misdemeanor. Um, I've never seen that charged, but that's what's in the code. Um, and so trespass to uh private property is a misdemeanor if it's an area that's open to the public, if it's a an area that's not open to the public, it's a gross misdemeanor under crim trespass one. And so um theft, just general theft is a gross misdemeanor of three sixty, three hundred and sixty four days. And so those are just some other.
Yeah, much appreciated. So knowing that, that this would and and um and there, is it right that there's not really, there's similar laws on our books that have the kind of a three strikes monetary penalty that rises to the level of misdemeanor that's kind of rare?
I would say that is rare. That is not a a typical feature of um offenses under Title Nine. Although it's, it it does happen. I I don't know how to else explain it. For example, Grants Pass, the um city that is um at issue in the Ninth Circuit case, they had a similar structure. But, yeah.
Okay. So so given that it's in line with other laws and um I do really, I say it as a door knocked, uh really respect our Bremerton Police Department. I think they do an excellent job of enforcing the laws with uh compassion and with uh really using all the proper resources at their disposal. Um, so I would uh also be in favor of making this a uh just simple misdemeanor um and removing the monetary penalty language. As far as the shelter space definition, um I'm also supportive of making our code in line with other cities regarding that language of voluntary um acts. I I really I really appreciate um some of the firsthand testimony we've heard about how however, that sometimes is not applied fairly. If somebody is unfairly kicked out based on a rumor or something unsubstantiated, it's not like they have a a legal process with an individual shelter, a nonprofit, a religious organization to contest that. So my heart really goes out in those circumstances. Um, but I do struggle with having a code that is separate from all the studies in all the other cities in the area, knowing what a regional issue this is. Um. So I would really, again, we can't address it in this ordinance in terms of providing resources, but would encourage administration and regional partners to provide um low or no barrier shelters for folks that that have or don't fit in with other shelters. If you have um if you have a drug addiction and that's a, you know, reasonable uh request of a shelter that you don't do drugs in that shelter, um I would ideally hope that there are shelters out there that have lower no barriers. Um. And that there's different tiers so that different folks suffering from different afflictions can get the help they need in the proper places without um affecting other folks. All that a long way to say, I I I support that as well. Um. As far as the properties and the and the and the picking and choosing, I really do appreciate the the comments of how tough that would be. I think it would take some time. I think we could do it, looking at certain properties and saying, gosh, that's a, that's a point oh one acre property with uh, you know, hazards on it. That is not suitable. Um, that's a property that doesn't make sense. We but we're not going to be able to do that tonight. Um, I I do have to see being, say, being the District Three representative, including downtown and the M L K Way area and Marvin Williams, though. I I really sympathize with folks that that, you know, saw this, saw this map, got scared, you know? I get it. Um, I get it. Uh, I do want to make sure folks are aware, though, that for quite a long time now, I mean, especially in the past six months, but really years, been getting daily requests from folks who live on M L K, from the Marvin Williams Center, from the surrounding area to to do something. Um, to do something because they have been affected by unregulated encampments. Um, and again, I I do want to couch, I speak all this on the enforcement terms of this ordinance covers. Um, and so I'm mostly talking about the the folks living nearby, the property owners and the businesses, but um that's not to forget the people that are experiencing homelessness and the resources they need. But um those folks are also saying, hey, why is this right next to me? Why is this right next to my house? And so that was why I was supportive of trying to find something uh reasonable, that when there is no shelter space available, there's still relief for the folks that are um experiencing the side effects of unregulated encampments and for council members' point, the really national, regional, and state failure um as a society. Uh, specifically, I want to address, like, when this map came out, the Pine Road um forty acre plot, um that's in the northwest section of the city, I was really shocked to see that that was uh on there. And against a natural consequence, we said, here's all the public space and public properties in the city or at council. And we said, what happens if you remove X, Y, and Z parks and and the right of way and all way? And that's what you get left. Um, part of that included places that, as mentioned earlier, are normally off limits um with no trespassing signs, the watershed, environmentally sensitive areas. And I know we had a, we had a conversation early on about explicitly calling out environmentally sensitive areas because I think we recognize the impacts that unregulated encampments have on environmentally sensitive areas and the importance to to keep those pristine. Um, and the reason we didn't include specific language was because um many of them would, pretty much all of them, we assumed would be included under this provision that spaces that are normally off limits to the public, like the watershed, apply. And so this Pine Road was a was a was a shock. So um and it just, and it doesn't for whatever reason. And Attorney Fennel, do you want to, I think you know you have better information than me on on why that particular forty acre parcel isn't under other protections or the definition of it as a water, like the sister in the middle counts, but not the rest.
Right. It's stuff, it's just the 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 square in the middle is a separate parcel. And so when the Public Works Department was tasked with taking the big list of city properties and removing parks, removing um the other protected at all times properties from that list, it was one that didn't fit any other category. Um, it's not a park, it's not a watershed. And the department, you know, this was giving you the data that you'd ask for, uh it didn't want to editorialize and gave you what was requested. And so that's um why it is on there.
Correct. So all that to say, now that we have the list and we're looking at them, I personally would not support that remaining included as an area where enforcement would be suspended. Um, I want to say that out loud. I don't, I wouldn't, I wouldn't vote for an ordinance where that was um that was a place where enforcement was suspended when there's no shelter space available because it does not make it's an area that to me does not make sense. Um, on Oyster Basin, that's been mentioned a couple of times, that's the parcel of land, kind of just south of the Public Works building. That parcel alone, it's my understanding that it's not really suitable as a lone site. And then I know we by the courts, we have to have, right? We we have to carve out some place where enforcement is suspended when there's no shelter space and it has to be some minimum area. We can't say, oh, there's ten by ten patch of land over here. Okay, that's the one space with no enforcement. Um, we need some minimum acreage. It doesn't have to be hundreds of acres, but there's some number in there. Um, that would kind of, we would hope satisfy the court should we ever be challenged on it. The Attorney Fennel, does this parcel alone, is that enough acreage to satisfy?
Well, no, I would, I would say no. I don't think that it's um there's a, there's several different conversations going on too, because there's some folks that are talking about establishing um a designated camping area, which would fall under the available shelter. Um, that's, I would need a lot of work. It's not, it's not graded or anything right now. Um, and I could, but and so I don't think by that itself, you couldn't just eliminate everything but that site and you know, pass the ordinance. I would, I would not recommend the council taking that action.
Perfect. Thank you. Um, so yeah, that's comes down to the picking and choosing tonight. I don't think we can say oh, this is the one parcel that's gonna be okay. And we can't say, uh, start picking and choosing all of them. Uh. Okay, that was kind of my my personal comments. Um. So let me take a pause here on the on the mayor's first suggestion. And this is I don't, it does not sound like we were going to have really a path forward to have a vote next week. I'm gonna say that out loud. I'm not, I'm not hearing that as council president. I know there's there's shock in the room, but um yeah, it's, well, we'll see. Um.
Council President, before you go, sure.
Item by item, can I say one final thing? One final suggestion.
Okay, how about I give everyone a quick round because I want to be fair. And then uh then I'll try and go. Yeah, we'll do one more quick round. And then I'm gonna go through the kind of two mayor suggestions and then our path forward and see if we can uh.
I I think the amount of time I talk relative to other council members, thank you for allowing that. And I appreciate the lack of size for most of you. Um, I I think what I would uh like to add to Councilmember Younger's comment is I think we need a confirmation. I I appreciate that the mayor is willing to take this up. Um, but I think that's punting it. And I think that um the administration can make the recommendation, but just like when we appoint people to commissions or, you know, federal agents, uh, federal executives, appoint people to the judiciary, the legislative just is a check to make sure because that gives power to those people who are represented. And I see a lot of signs in the audience tonight. I know that one of my very active constituents is planning a meeting on Sunday to discuss this with my constituents. The mayor can't be everywhere. And I know at least three of our seats are up, right? And there needs to be political consequences to decisions.
No, I appreciate that point of order. No discussion of elections.
Sorry, sorry. So I think it would be really important to make sure that that's fine, that the the mayor is the one, because he has the resources to choose these parcels. I would request that council confirms that. Um, I I I also don't think that Pine Road is is a good place for this because it's outside of a lot of resources that are needed. The mayor could choose that. And if we don't have a mechanism to catch that, I I think that use serves a lot of our constituents' power.
Cheers prerogative on making clear this ordinance can specify properties where enforcement is suspended. That recommended list of properties or areas, get it anytime, come from the mayor's office for us to consider. Areas, if you're talking, this is where a regulated permitted uh site would be. That is outside our scope of this agenda item. Attorney Fennel, just.
So I'm just trying to think of like other controls that are in place, I guess, for the council to be involved in the process. So um real estate purchases have to come to council, budget authority. I mean, I don't know if anyone's looked at how much a regulated encampment costs, but they are, they are, they they exceed the the mayor's um contracting authority. Um, and and so I don't think that's going to be something that you're not involved in. Um, but I'm just trying to think through like, for this purposes of this ordinance, what that would look like, like language wise, because this is a, this is an ordinance that, I mean, it's in Title Nine, it regulates where people can and can't camp. And I feel like that's almost more like a land use or something like, I mean, or control on them. I'm just trying to figure out exactly how that would look.
Can can I respond to that?
Um, yeah, have the floor. I'm gonna give everyone equal time.
I I I was just thinking, um as as far as when we say designated, you know, we are going to ban camping in the city of Bremerton, except for these areas when no shelter beds are uh available. These areas will be decided by the administration with council approval. That's kind of something I was thinking about.
Okay, so um as it's written right now, though, the city designated areas, that's under available shelter space. And so there wouldn't be a need to have language in there that it's um enforcement is suspended in a city designated space because enforcement wouldn't take place there because that would be part of your available shelter.
So even undeveloped public property that we, that can be sheltered?
If it was undeveloped public property that then became a I don't want to. An outdoor encampment operated or permitted by the city, then it comes under available shelter.
Got you. Got it. Thanks. That makes sense.
And it goes to the county as well. So that definition falls into.
All right. All right. So Chamberlain, your second round here.
Sir Mochlin, were you next? I apologize. Okay. So um, thank you. President Coughlin, can you um let uh Councilman Younger know that I appreciate his suggestions, please?
You could just phrase it as, I appreciate.
Wow. I'm starting to follow the rules. Um.
Don't say, it's a good point of of education. Uh, our rules and procedures, don't say, Councilman Younger, I I man, you're doing great. Okay.
I would love to be able to tell Councilman Younger directly that it was a good suggestion.
I appreciate the.
Y'all know how I feel about that.
Yeah, thank you.
Um, so um, I'm pretty sure the mayor. I'm, I'm pretty sure the mayor has a good grasp on how people feel about some areas. I, I'm pretty sure he took a little less heat maybe than I did at a certain meeting recently. And, and frankly, I'm not prepared to have an educated opinion because I'm not an engineer. I'm not a city planner. I rely on those professionals to advise us. Who trust the process? Oh, well, then that's been challenged recently, hasn't, hasn't it? But I certainly don't feel prepared to, to choose a property. My hope is that all of the folks that work under the administration would have that knowledge because they're the ones that, that, they're the ones that make these decisions. So I definitely echo, concur with Counselor Younger in that regard. Please don't put that on me. I don't know what I'm talking about. I mean, I know, but I also don't really know. We know that I don't know. Y'all know I don't know. My job is to just be a representative, you know, and, and our jobs as representatives is not to know everything. Our job is to learn along the way, if we can, to come into the role with hopefully with some education and some insight and some intelligence, but mostly we're here to represent our people and what they want. And so in that regard, yeah, please don't keep that giant piece of land on there for unregulated camping because my folks don't want it. Y'all heard loud and clear. I heard loud and clear. And so let's make sure that when we make these decisions that we're giving it to administration with his or future her, who knows, or them, with all of the staffing that they have. I feel like y'all know how I feel about the first suggestion made regarding the infractions. So I'm not even going to address it because I'm probably in the minority. But I do want to kind of echo, and what I had already written down too, echo something that President Coughlin said, which was, you know, we're leaving, we're letting the private entity, the shelter be the judge and jury for these folks. And I suppose I would have an easier time accepting that language if we had more than one shelter. If let's say somebody has a personality conflict with, with the folks at one shelter, it could just be one person that they have a personality conflict with that night and they're out. And if they had somewhere else to go, I think I would, I think I would feel okay about this language, but fact of the matter is we have one shelter and it's not even open right now. It's not going to be open till November 1st. It's not that I don't trust people for the most part there. But what I don't want to do is, is leave our folks without options. The, the other thing too, is I don't really know how the police are going to go around and, and, and check that. You know, I mean, yeah, they can ask Salvation Army, but there, that's going to be even more points of contact as far as I'm concerned. That, and how do you check if somebody's continent, incontinent and can't go in? You know, are you going to check somebody's like conditions to say, oh, you can't go in because you're incontinent? You know, you have this physical disability that prohibits you from being able to be in this shelter. So that's other points of contact that I don't know that they necessarily want to make either. But or that they necessarily would, because if you're building the relationships with people, maybe you already know these things. So I, I guess I'm, I'm not really in support of the last language. If we had more shelters, I would be. And I think that's all I'd like to say. So thank you to those that had the suggestions. Oh, I do, I do want to say y'all, it takes an hour to walk to Oyster Bay from Salvation Army. It's about 2.7 miles. It also takes one hour to walk to that little plot of land. I mean, the large plot of land over in my district, but I feel like either walk is a really long walk. I mean, are we going to ask people to walk to the shelter, find out there's no bed, then walk back to Oyster Bay? Do we have provisions for providing transportation? I, I guess that's, that's my, my, my hesitation with the Oyster Bay property. Thank you.
Thanks. Just Kitsap access buses for low income, senior, disabled. Also, that was one of the reasons that we wanted, we, we thought it was best to have sites that were cited on public transit lines because, you know, who knows, someday Sunday transit will come back. That's really about it. Also, one of the things that Attorney Finnell brought up is a lot of these ordinances require the city to pay for transport if, if public transit isn't readily available. That's it. Oh, wait, I'm supposed to say this. I like the mayor's suggestion because it was approved by Chief Wolf. I have a tough time with the second one because I don't think being meant, in fact, I'm certain mental, being mentally ill is not a voluntary action. And for many people, being addicted to intoxicants or opioids is, is no longer a voluntary action. That's it.
Maybe I'll, I'll give opportunity to mayor and folks to, if there's anything misstatements, but let's do, let's finish around this council round. Allow you to all chime in and then we'll draw to a close here. All right. So yes, next up, Frye.
Just a couple of points. We talked about locating it, finding a piece of land possibly that wasn't in the city limits. Just a reminder, if anything, if the crimes committed at that camp, that sheriff, isn't it, that would have jurisdiction over that? That would concern me. I, I think if we're going to be providing this, we need to provide the level of service. And I just believe that the Bremerton Police Department provides a higher level of service than the Sheriff's Department does. Don't ever use that against me, please, chief, if you're talking to Sheriff Geezy. So that's just a quick clarification of that. And then, you know, I, I want to, I know it's not popular with administration. And yet I did bring up that one tenth of one percent. And I'm just going to say this, regardless of where, where we talk about it, we communicate our priorities in our budget. A family communicates their priorities through their budget. We all, how we spend our money in this society is how we proclaim our priorities. And I want us to keep that in mind as we go into budget deliberations. There isn't this, just the funnel of money that we can, we can do, but goodness gracious. If we're at this point in our society, in our city, mayor, you know, maybe it's something we need to do for a period of time. And so I'll just leave us with that. It's, I know it's a tough sell. But I do believe, and I've created budgets, I've led many nonprofits, I've led, you know, large nonprofits. And I, I practice what I preach. You know, any budget I led communicated that organization's values. And we need to do the same as a city. So that's it.
Younger?
Okay, real simple. That's what I said before. I want to give the mayor all the tools he's asking for, for effectively addressing our current situation. Therefore, I am going to support both his proposals and I suggest we do so as a council. We can always change it if the second one especially, even the first one has unintended consequences or is problematic. But I want to give him the tools he's asking for. The second thing is, again, I don't want to pick winners or losers. So keep the ordinance as written as far as the definition of shelter spaces, including the, the camping provision. And remove under unauthorized camping section, the part where it says when overnight shelter is not available, camping is only prohibited on these city properties. Just strike that entire thing. This is going to put the pressure off the council. We passed an ordinance. We gave the mayor his tools. Now it is up to the mayor to set up as soon as possible overnight shelter in various forms, working with nonprofits. Also, as a city, setting up a designated camping space or two. Therefore, we will not have unauthorized camping on the rest of our city. We have to do it this way in that none of us has the authority to administer any type of program. It squarely lies under the mayor's shoulders. So I would really prefer that we pass the ordinance as I just described.
Attorney Finnell, can you repeat your understanding of Councilmember Younger's proposal? So make sure that one's clear.
Sure. And we've looked at this one before, actually. This is what is when we were talking about this back in June, it was the option where the council basically just adopts language below our existing code, the suspends enforcement when no shelter space is available. And then we would make the, the, the changes to our definition of shelter space. And the changes to the penalty provision. And I actually have those all drafted right now, right here in front of me. And I could do it at different versions if no one, if people aren't sure of like where they stand on the penalty provision, or if we know that, or if you're not sure about the addition of the language that came in this afternoon. That could be, there could be two versions presented of that. But no, I think I understand Councilmember Youngers. It's, it's basically the same ordinance that we have right now with a different defin, with the definition of available shelter space and a suspension of enforcement if no shelter space is available. And an increased provision on the penalty to remove the predicate infractions. I got it.
Point of information.
Yeah, point of information.
Right, Robert's rules of order. That's the thing, you know.
Ask a question for more.
I say, so point of information on that. So does that mean that we are not, because the shelters are not open, that there's no provision to move folks off of MLK or Broadway at this point in time under this language?
Right. Enforcement would be suspended if there's no shelter space available.
Thank you.
Still the shelter. Yeah. Yeah. Perfect. Want to make sure, uh, Younger, any other, or make sure you seated the floor?
Yeah, Attorney Finnell accurately summarized what I was trying to say, but the intent is, is not to give relief, not to not give relief to the folks on MLK Way and, and Broadway. It's to have the mayor set up a camping site as soon as possible so they can have relief.
No, good. See, no, that shake from Good Now. Perfect. Okay. So let me go through kind of these three decisions. I'm hearing, I think, a pretty clear majority in favor of the proposal to make it a straight misdemeanor. If there's any objection to that assessment, let me know. Okay. I know the shelter space definition update to include the language regarding quote unquote voluntary behaviors and, and not being in a shelter because of that. I think I'm hearing a close majority for that, but if we need to take a thumbs up, thumbs down, let me know. But if anyone disagrees with that assessment of it's a majority of council.
And I can also present it as in two for, I mean, there could be with and without. That's not, it, it's literally like.
Yeah, I'm happy with a thumbs up. Okay. So let's just for the record, a thumbs up on supporting the mayor's suggestion from a few hours ago on updating the shelter space definition. The second item, I think everyone knows what I'm talking about. Okay. Perfect. That's, yeah, clear majority on that one as well. Okay. And then as far as all our options tonight went, we are clearly not going forward with what's the draft is for next week. We are not going to be picking properties right now. And it sounds like that's tricky in the future. I'm just checking all the options. There's still the possible planning strip ordinance, but that would require more time and more feedback. But let me, let me stop there and say, if we did that, there would clearly be more time for this. So is council in favor of basically taking, I don't know what it would take, but a couple of extra weeks for administration to evaluate the Eugene planning strip ordinance? Possibly, okay. Possibly. I mean, I, I'm not sure how I feel. I'm going to do a sideways on that one too, because, yeah.
We could also, if you wanted to, maybe talk about it more in public safety.
For the record, Councilmember Mokler says she's been in Eugene and they have big parking, parking strips.
Public safety sounds good.
So that's maybe one we could do in parallel. All right. And then we have, just give me one second here. I'm also, I just want to get this all for the record. I'm also hearing not a majority of council support to go back and revisit time based restrictions or X feed from a community center property. All right. See any checks there? Perfect. All right. So that leaves us with, uh, I would say the option of, as was just presented, updating the enforcement with the new shelter space provisions and the other two suggestions from the mayor. And as Attorney Finnell just presented, and we could put that on the agenda for next week for a vote. Or we could take more time and evaluate the planning strip ordinance. Or we could put the one next week for a vote and in public safety, discuss the planning strip ordinance and amend the ordinance if that proves to be a viable option. All right. So I'm seeing thumbs up. Let me restate that. We would put, as Attorney Finnell proposed, as Councilmember Younger proposed, for a vote next week. And at the same time, public safety would continue discussing the Eugene planning strip ordinance. And we could tackle that at a future date.
And, and I would just be
Yes.
explaining it at the next meeting. I don't think we're ready to go there yet.
Sorry, you'd be explaining the planning strip ordinance to public safety. Right. Okay. But the actual updating this BMC chapter on authorized camping would be ready to, to vote on. Okay. All right. I'm just going to look for a majority of thumbs up on that course of action. Questions, let me know. Well, taking my quick personal time in that round two, I didn't get to and say, I, I I do struggle because of the folks in my district on MLK and near there. But hearing all the difficulties that we're now encountering, I would like to pursue this planning strip ordinance because that may provide relief, for example, to Martin Williams, though I don't pass. But personally, that's a I do echo Councilmember Younger's thoughts on telling those constituents. I, I sympathize. You've gone through a lot in the past couple of years. However, sorry. Put pressure on the mayor to continue working, who I know, I know has been working hard and I know this isn't easy. But get the shelter space available in the city, in the county, and then there can be enforcement. So I want to say that for my personal.
And I have another point of information. I don't mean to cut you off.
Yeah, no, go for it.
But the planning strip ordinance, isn't it just like, are we just, is that to go into effect sooner than a shelter's going up? Is that the purpose of it? So people can get off the planners, the planner strips? Another tool? Is that the end game?
The phrase is right. Attorney Finnell, I'm wrong. The idea would be that if public safety discusses that, that would be a s, update to a separate piece of city code, which would allow those property owners potentially have folks trespass from the planning strip in front of their house or their business. Yeah.
I would say if it is an alternative to the council's draft that was in front of you tonight about right of way planning strip and all of that, and it is another approach that a different city took. And it was based on what the budding property owner basically wanted.
Okay. But until then, they can still camp in the woods or go to the forty acre lot by my district. If the planning strip were, I mean, point of information on that, that's what would logistically happen if they were taken off the planning strip, they can go anywhere else they want.
Until there's shelter space available.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Council, any questions? Everyone clear on a course of action? Make sure I'm with understandings. Perfect. All right. Thank you so much. Oh, Mayor, I'm sorry. I did promise if there's any other information you wanted to add. And for everybody, I, I do, I really do appreciate the mayor being here. I have to draw a fine line on the mayor's not a member of council, so can't get a turn with everyone else, but we are really appreciative of you all to ask questions, gain information. So just to clarify, go ahead, Mayor.
Yep. Yeah. And so I'm, you know, I, I don't want to over, it sounds like I have support for my first request. The second one, I, I missed the thumbs up or down vote. I don't want to oversell it if you already decided.
Thumbs up. Yeah.
All thumbs up. Okay. All right, so um now, right now, just just so you know, this this crisis has been occurring in some people's lives for quite a while. So with the um with camping and and even when the shelter was open, open, we had folks who were refusing shelter. And we were spending a lot of time on MLK Way. This is nothing, this is nothing new for me and those folks down there. The the thought, and I I'm, correct me if I'm wrong, but the thought that this ordinance as crafted would create enough chaos to pressure me to move faster or find solutions. I'm I'm a little, you know, I'm just kind of questioning that, if that's your actual intent. Um, and I would, and I would ask if I, that you consider potentially consider time. Everything, if you're going to do this, if you're going to go this route, at least give some relief to some of our parts of our city that they've already established entrenched encampments and do a time restriction. That's that's it.
Okay. So this is yet another last minute suggestion.
You know what? I I I guess I understand the mayor's concerns. Y'all, I'm going to butt on, I'm going to butt in. Because how is he going to set up a shelter in two weeks in, for he can't? Y'all are, y'all are ridiculously clueless if you think he can.
Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna stop you there on the language.
Okay, well, you are misinformed if you think that that can happen. Because it takes budget allocation, it takes ordering supplies, it takes that. It's not like it's going to, everything can be set up in in thirty minutes. It's going to take zoning, like making sure you're in alliance, you know, in in accordance with zoning. It takes time to set up an appropriate shelter space. Um, and if you look at other municipalities and what they've done, it's taken time. So I guess I understand his concern and I and I and I honor what you say, mayor.
So it's a mayor, um I'm going to put this forward, but if folks still need to speak, but we do need to wrap this up. If mayor, you have a complete ordinance, we would love to consider it. Part of the city charter is for you to bring items forward for our consideration, to make recommendations on action um to address the city's needs. That's language from the charter. So if you have a complete ordinance that you want to bring to us, that would have been fantastic back in 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 June. If you have one now, I think that's, it's you're certainly your prerogative. In the meantime, I think let's go forward with what council drafted, but council members, yeah, Councilmember Younger.
So in response to Councilmember Chamberlain, yes, it's going to take time. I fully realize that, but let's start the clock.
Council, quick finishing comments here, and then I think we have a or I'm sorry, let's go. Good, good now, I'm sorry, my goodness. Mokler, good now, Mokler, then Dennehy, flip the coin.
Um, I just want to say that alls I felt I heard the mayor say was great. Um, but can we do anything to give any relief? So that's now solved, sort of. Can we do anything now in the time it takes to stand up other solutions to give relief to the people who've been burdened um with this? So that's that's all I heard. Um, and I don't and and that's an option. We could come up with a temporary something um, which I don't think is a bad idea because as as there's folks that are relieved with where we're at, there's people that are not so happy, but the folks that have asked us to do something, it could be spring. Hopefully not.
Mokler.
Ukrainians set up refugee shelters within days. If this is something that can be done. Um, my second and final comment is, I don't think anybody on this council is aiming to create chaos as a way to urge the mayor to act. I think we're choosing a method that takes note of his greater expertise, his greater staff and his role as defined by charter to be the head of the executive branch.
Benny?
Uh, I I agree with Councilmember Mokler on that point. Uh, just a quick clarification, so uh Mayor Wheeler, your sorry, I'm trying to look at you. I'll also talk into the, you're right, I can move these. I forgot they're not on. They are wireless. It is twenty twenty-three. Thank you for that. Attorney Fennell. Sorry, now I just, I feel like it's been two and a half years. I haven't realized that. Um, sorry, I'm I'm also a little tired. Um, so just for clarification, your opposition is to Councilmember Younger's suggestion that the administration define the areas that will be exempt from the no camping ordinance? Or are you specifically talking about the um the creation of 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 shelter as we as we would understand it?
Actually, sure. I think I understand what the mayor was saying. I think what he was saying is that this council should revisit a time based restriction similar to what Portland did. We talked about this back in June where um camping is prohibited. Um, you pick a time, it's like between eight and eight and eight AM and eight PM. It means that um if you were camping during that time, then it would be illegal.
Okay, thank thank you for that. Um, just a comment on that, then. I thank you for that clarification. Is is that correct?
Yes, that's all, that is all I'm, that's, that is my ordinance that I'm proposing. Exactly what you have, just put the time based restriction in there.
Got you. So my my response to that for for my fellow council members is I think we've discussed that, and I think we kind of discussed that that may be cruel for people to have to pack up their entire belongings um be between certain hours. I I think we were all moved by Vice Ch- Chamberlain's personal account of needing to to leave a spot um in order to you know, go find resources, come back. And and I think um Councilmember Younger's point about being able to to have a space where people can leave their things as they go out and search for employment, as they go out and search for resources to get them out of the situation that they're in is is pretty important. So while I while I understand that request, I I think I think my mind's made up on that one to not have a time restriction. Thanks.
All right. Now that that's on the floor, any benefit council member for the time of their thoughts, just to get to the same thumbs up down on the time based restriction? Or just for record, sir, Dan as well. Okay. All right, that's a large majority not in favor, as we previously discussed. Okay, so that said, we have the same marching orders we had a few minutes ago. Um, well, we'll get that on the agenda next week uh for a vote. And at the same time, public safety to discuss the Eugene parking strip uh ordinance. All right. Thank you, council. Thank you, mayor. Thank you, Attorney Fennell and Chief Wolf for being here. Um, quick break because it's getting